Good evening and welcome to the September 19th regular board meeting. Mr. Vasek, if you'll call the roll.
Campbell.
Here.
Chrysler.
Here.
Hairston.
Here.
Mooring.
Here.
Pickle Antonio.
Here.
All members are present.
And if you will all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the August 13th Finance Committee meeting, the August 15th Regular Board meeting, and the August 27th Student Learning and Achievement Committee meeting?
I'll move.
Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
Aggitt.
Mr. Hairston, any changes at all to the minutes? Okay, Mr. Vasek, if you'll call the roll.
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Mooring.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. So this is the best part of our agenda, and it's our school and community reports and presentations. We are going to start with a presentation from Gehanna Middle School East, Mr. Brad Barbosa and Ms. Bonnie Meeks, despite what the agenda says, from the Gehanna Community Art Hop.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Is the technology working?
Yeah, good. So now the microphone works. We've got Ian's notes, we've got our slide show up, everything's good now. But first of all, thank you all for letting me highlight some, a really wonderful event at Middle School East that went on last spring that we hope to duplicate again this year. But this idea, I just kind of want to talk about how ideas start in conversations with Mrs. Meeks and myself. Usually she comes up to me with that kind of look on her face and she says, Brad, I've got this idea, okay? And usually they require a lot of work on my part, but they're always great ideas and they always make the school a better place. I'll give you just a couple of examples that I kind of came up with. Our design in the library, which those of you guys have been in the library, the PTA put a ton of money into and a lot of time, but really Mrs. Meeks had this vision of color and design and everything that went into the library, for the paint on the walls to the, you know, she helped with all of that and did a ton of work with that. The name signs that you see on the outside of the doors, Mrs. Meeks helped with that. She set up times for teachers to come in and paint their signs, and then she hand painted all the names on the signs and we got those up too, and it makes the school look like a better place. Our TV monitors that are on the walls this year as you walk in the building where we are highlighting, so far we've had teacher selfies, you know, as a welcome back to school, but we're starting to recognize students throughout the year on there as well. That all came out of a conversation with Mrs. Meeks. It started with, you know, I think I have this idea, okay? So this time, the idea was, the statement was, I think I have this idea and what I would like to do is involve the community in a demonstration of our students' artwork. From that little conversation, this whole art hop collaboration with the other middle schools, students involved, businesses, the Gehanna community, all evolved from that. And I give Mrs. Meeks a lot of credit because, you know, the creativity that she has to come up with ideas to involve people in the arts is really a great thing, and she is definitely an asset to our, to Middle School East, but to Gehanna schools as well. So I'm going to introduce these guys, but while they're talking, I'm going to show, you know, just a few pictures, hopefully it'll all work, a few pictures of the event as it happened, so you can watch that. But Mrs. Meeks and Mr. Washington.
So I just want to give you a little bit, I guess, of a background of what the art hop was. So our art hop was basically like an art show that was held in like a gallery hop format. So rather than galleries hosting our work, it was hosted by local businesses, especially places that serve desserts or sweets. So we had our work in six different places, and at every place, the participants received a sample, whatever that place had, and we asked all of our businesses to donate products to everyone. So that, I mean, kids love desserts, little, so middle schoolers, so they were so excited about it. We were able to involve 120 students between all three middle schools, and we'd like to grow and be able to involve more, but our first year was, we were just testing and there's definitely things that we learned and things we would change and add and do differently. Our goal was basically for our art hop to be mutually beneficial to us and to the businesses. So we wanted to promote the arts and to show our program, but we also wanted to promote the businesses and get people in the doors at the businesses. So basically, these were just some of my observations about the night. The first thing that I loved is that students brought fan clubs, and you can see some pictures have a lot of people there with them. And some of our students are good at everything. I wasn't that kid, but then one of my favorite conversations was with a parent that said, I drag my daughter to all of her brother's sporting events and everything's all about her brother, and so this is like a big thing for her, and they brought 12 people. So I thought that was really cool. Another thing that I really loved about this was getting to know these local business owners. They all have really cool stories of how they started their businesses, and it seemed like they all knew their why, and I just felt like that was very inspiring to me as I reflect on my teaching practice. And then the other thing about the art hop that I'm very proud about is that we were very intentional about making it accessible to all of our students. So I know that we have students from different socioeconomic backgrounds, and so we didn't want anyone to be excluded. So every student that was chosen received a free ticket, and then if additional family members wanted to come and have samples, then they would purchase tickets. But tickets were by donation, so they were a dollar, so they started at a dollar. And we had people that bought tickets for up to $50 apiece, but we also had people that bought tickets for a dollar. So I was really proud of that, and also we made sure that, like, I see my students all over Gehanna in the summertime, I know they ride their bikes all over the place, so we would try to be intentional about picking businesses that are here in Gehanna that they can ride their bikes to, so if there isn't an adult at home that could take them, that they would be able to do that themselves. So anyways, it ended up being just a really fun event that I was really proud of.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ian Washington, and I was brought here today not just to make my principal, Ms. Barbosa, and my art teacher, Ms. Meeks, to look good today. I'm here to explain my great experience at last year's art hop. I was very excited when I found out that my artwork was going to be presented and shown at, just in this fundraiser. Because for me, it was somewhat inspirational to me to know that my artwork was displayed, display-worthy at the local businesses. My artwork was displayed at Pam's Popcorn, actually, for, yeah, Pam's Popcorn. She was just a very nice person, the business was very good, popcorn was good, too. I felt very good that my art was displayed publicly instead of just around my school like usual. Just all around, I could say that the businesses were all friendly, and that I think everyone could say that they had a good time, and I thought that was very good for the community to just be aware that, just for the school, to like see what the school's doing and how their children are doing, just for the community to see how upbringing, how up willing it is for, just to have these type of fundraisers. And I just truly thank you for letting me come here today and say what I thought about this event, and I would like to give a shout out to my wonderful art teacher, Mrs. Meeks, for being a great teacher, and thank you all again for caring about the children of Gehanna.
You did a quick cleanup from cross-country, huh?
Yes.
You looked very nice. I heard you got a special shout-out on your, on your way here.
Yeah.
So Ian always makes us look good, so that's important. But I did want to just include here some comments that we got back from some of the business owners. Thanks for including us in the event, it was so fun watching the kids light up when they saw their art on our wall. I tried to keep track of all the people who came through, and we guessed it was something about 120 ticket holders that came through to their business. So the businesses really appreciated being included in this. Thanks for letting me be part of it. You guys did a killer job. We love meeting so many great kids and parents, and thanks for picking up to us. And one additional one, I think, from business owners, wanted to say thanks, what a great turnout. A nice way to show off to students' parents, letting people see the great small businesses in Gehanna. So this really ended up being more than just a demonstration of the arts. The business owners really, really appreciated having that kind of traffic through their businesses. We do have, this is Pam's Popcorn, she couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to just share. So the sound is not great, but I think you'll get the message for sure. That didn't play. I hope this plays.
Hi, my name is Pam Toga. I'm the owner of Pam's Popcorn in Wady City, Gehanna. I've been doing popcorn for 14 years. I was downtown for 12, and I'm heading to Gehanna for two. My children all went to Gehanna School system. They've all just graduated, starting to be ready. Congratulations for you. And my youngest sister, Greg, are with you, so it was great. Thank you, Gehanna School, second child, I got to read. The art hop was an absolute success. It blew me away. I was not even prepared for a line out the door. At first I was giving samples, and I'm like, oh, can't do this anymore, too many people. A lot of people did not know I was here, so that was a great thing for me, and having 200-plus people going to different businesses and seeing what Gehanna has to offer, and seeing the talented art, let me tell you, these kids can draw better than I can. I still have two of the students' artwork out because I'm all about artwork myself. It's a great program, I absolutely tell them I would do it again, but I would doubt I'll be a little more prepared this time, and it's a great thing, whoever thought of it, kudos. I would think all of these businesses liked it, and it was great to see people coming in our business who didn't know we were here, so very good thing, and I absolutely sign up to do it again. Thank you, have a great day.
And we actually also have one of our other awesome business owners here, Jay Sokol, who owns Buckeye Candy Company.
At a time when Mrs. Meeks came into my store, it was probably about February or so, we'd only been open about four months, so most people in Gehanna didn't know we were open. And I didn't know it was a new event, we were new, but we decided to take a shot with it because we want to support the schools, the children, and the community, and it was just a fabulous, fabulous event. That first quote up there was for me. We had at least 120 people that night, probably more, and the following week and a half, two weeks, all the kids wanted to come and bring their friends, bring relatives to come see their artwork, and they were so excited when they'd say, oh my god, there's my thing on the wall, there's my painting, there's my drawing, whatever. So it was a great event, and we were thrilled to participate, would love to do it again. Hopefully it can become an annual event because, you know, it really was successful watching the kids take their pride in their work and seeing it like a, like an art exhibit, a real art exhibit, so thank you for including us. And that was before we had our Gehanna gummy bears, too.
We also had a lot of really great air and feedback, and this is just one, one email that we got, just like to thank and congratulate you for a fantastic art hop. It's clear that middle school teachers put in tremendous amount of work in making the event so amazing. We appreciated communication about the event and seeing the artwork and all the local businesses love the partnership as well. So it really was a great event for us, a great event for the community as well.
Yeah, and I just want to talk quickly about our partnerships, and I have to say also that I did not do this alone. A lot of people helped me, but it was really a collaboration with the other two art teachers in the district, Doug Parker and Tiffany Nordaby, so this could not have happened without them. So some of our partnerships, so Pam's Popcorn donated to every participant a bag of Chicago-style popcorn. Mrs. Turbo's Cookies had fresh baked hot cookies and a variety of flavors. Small Cakes had ice cream, homemade ice cream. Buckeye Candy Company had bags of gummies. Menchies had small samples of ice cream, and then people could go around and add their toppings to that. And Barrel &amp; Bor had hush puppies. And they also donated 15% back to our program, so that was amazing. And then additionally, we had, every student that was there received a free t-shirt, so I thought that was great because kids who came with fan clubs, it was able, or it made it so that you, the artist stood out from, you know, the other people who were there. The t-shirts were donated by CRT and Dr. Hatta. And then something else that we did is, we sold tickets for a donation, but for every dollar, you had got your name entered into a drawing for a $100 gift card, and that $100 gift card was donated by Custom Design Company. And then additionally, we had some other businesses that donated, so we created like a little bag for the kids, so they got a t-shirt, they got some stickers and things like that. And then also some other local businesses donated things that they could use later, so Art Garden Studios donated a free night, and then Nothing But Cakes donated a free buntini. And then we also worked with our swag class at the high school, and they really did the graphic design part of the project. So they designed the posters and the t-shirts and things like that, and that was really important, too.
So thank you all for your attention.
When is the next event?
Well, we have not set a date, but we will definitely set a date this year sooner than we did last year. So, but I would imagine late April, like we did last year. That was feedback that we got from businesses that may, is challenging because of graduation parties and things like that, so late May, or late April.
Say, I was able to go to a number of places, and it was really exciting, and I thought it was cool that you didn't tell the kids where their art was, although eventually they figured it out and they were texting each other, oh, I saw yours at Menchies, but it made them have to go to more places. And, and I also, you know, we ask a lot of our businesses, our businesses in Gehanna are very generous to our schools, and it really is nice that kids and families and fan groups were able to get into some of our small businesses and see them, because I think it may have built some business for them, and it's a way for us to kind of give back, so I thought that aspect was, was cool. But just the whole idea of bringing people together, getting them out for yogurt or ice cream or popcorn was just such a great idea. So I know it was a lot of work, and Ian, you did, you made Mr. Barbosa and Mrs. Meeks look really good. You look really good, and, and-
And your cross-country team, too.
Yeah. And so, so yeah, I hope it's a tradition that we continue for a long time to come because it was a lot of fun, and, and it's also provided an authentic learning experience for teachers, I mean, for students, as Ian said, having your art hang in a public space for people to see it and not just making it for an audience of, of your school or your teacher. So I thought that authenticity was great, too. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
A question. Ian, are you interested in art, like, as an expression of yourself, or is it something that you want to pursue going forward?
Yes, ma'am, I'm actually, I am very interested in engineering and robotics, so I think art and my favorite subject would be math, will help me throughout my robotics career.
That's great. Yeah, that's great.
Economic development, with that work, with working with businesses, so lots, lots of opportunity.
Thank you so much. So everyone is more than welcome to stay with us, but also please don't feel bad if you get up and go. Our next speaker is our new Student Council President this year, Grace Marica, Marika, Marika, I know that. So Grace, when you get up there, there's a button on that microphone, I can't tell if it's, it might still be on. Okay, you don't need to do anything then.
Okay. So hello, my name is Grace Marika, I'm this year's Student Council President, and I just wanted to update you guys on kind of the stuff that we're working on in Student Council. So the weekend of the 4th and the 5th is Homecoming Weekend, so our committee has been working hard on figuring out what our theme is going to be, and we decided on a night on Broadway, with the input from the students, we send out like a Google form that lets everybody vote on what theme they think they would like the best. So we're taking the hustle and bustle of New York and combining it with the magic of the Broadway theater to bring that to the high school and through our decorations. So it's going to be super cool. We have like, kind of this red carpet that looks like a street that's going to go down the hallway, where people can walk by, lots of lights and signs, stuff to make it really feel like New York. On Friday the 4th, that's a home football game, and that's also the announcement of the Homecoming Court. So at 6:00 PM, the court all loads up in different golf carts that are decorated, and they drive around the track and walk through the middle, and we have an announcer announce each one's names, and then the king and queen are crowned with crowns and sashes and stuff like that. And then we also begin setting up on Friday night and Saturday morning. So the dance is from 8:00 to 11:00, and we clean up 7:00 AM the next morning. So yeah, it's going to be early, but it's, it'll be okay. And this year, so last year, we kind of had a problem with, we lay like a giant tarp down that's taped, the custodians help us with, so that the gym floor doesn't get ruined, and we kind of had a little bit of an issue where it was being ripped up by girls' heels. So this year, we're asking that the girls take off their heels and we're providing flip-flops. So we have a coat check set up in the annex that costs a dollar, so you just have to put your heels in there for a dollar, and then we're providing flip-flops for everybody. So we're not making it mandatory, but we're really advising it so that our gym floor stays nice, because they just refinished it, so. And then that's pretty much it for Homecoming. Another thing we're working on this year is a new thing, it's called the Wellness Committee, run by the committee chair, Darren Fields, he's also a senior in Student Council. He really, this is a new committee this year, we kind of came up the initiative that mental health is like, kind of unspoken in Gehanna High School sometimes, so we really wanted to make it our job as a Student Council to bring like awareness to the student body and like let them know that it's okay to talk about it, and we want to talk about it, and we want to hear it, because that's something that everybody's going through in high school, especially when you're applying for college and working on finals and the ACT, and all of those things that stress people out, we want to make sure they know that they have resources and people they can talk to. So for the Wellness Committee, Darren has a small committee in Student Council that works every day on things that, a big project that they're going to do, one each quarter. So the one coming up this quarter is called Seize the Awkward Campaign, and you can look that, look that up online, but it's a campaign about when you have awkward kind of moments with you and your friends or your peers, you use that to take an opportunity to talk to them about their mental health. Just ask, hey, how are you doing? Are you okay? Like, what's going on? So we're making that a really big thing in the school, and we're putting big posters up, talking about seize the awkward, and having a hashtag seize the awkward, and use the awkward as a moment to talk about mental health. And a day during the week, during lunch period, so 4th, 5th, and 6th, for a whole week, we're going to have a table set up, run by Student Council members who know the whole campaign and what to talk about if people ask them questions, with bracelets, like wristbands that say hashtag seize the awkward, and stickers for their Chromebooks that also say hashtags seize the awkward. So we just want to get the message out that, like, it's definitely okay to talk about mental health, and we want to talk about it, we want to hear it, we want to make those awkward moments something that everybody talks about and goes through, just a way to check in with your peers. So that's kind of our first, like, big event for the Wellness Committee, but then we'll have one each quarter in high school. Darren is working really close with Ms. Williams and her Principal Advisory Board, so that was created, I think, the end of last year. I think they picked 20 students, maybe, who are all on that board, talking about different things that they can work through. So I know that Darren's working really closely with them and how, like, getting different students' perspective outside of Student Council, because we have a lot of, we talk to each other a lot, but we're trying to work on how we can get the schools' input. Another thing, again, that we're talking about is communication. So we are working on making our communication with the student body and the community. So a way that we're working on the student body is our Communications Officer set up a remind that we're trying to get every student on, so that they can get alerts from Student Council. If it's about, hey, we have a dime to donate at Moz today from 5:00 to 7:00, or we have the Homecoming Dance coming up, make sure you buy our tickets, here's the link for online, or here's one that will be sold in the cafeteria. So we're just trying to make sure that all the students are getting the information that they need, and everybody's included and participating, because that will increase all of our student morale in Student Council. And Buckeye-thon, if most of you don't know, Buckeye-thon is Ohio State's big fundraiser for Nationwide Children's Hospital, and we have Gehanna-thon, which is our big fundraiser, that is a part of Buckeye-thon. So 14 of us went to high school orientation event, four people from Student Council, and we mixed with other high schoolers to brainstorm ideas about fundraising. So we got to meet with the Buckeye-thon advisors and all the students that are part of it in, at Ohio State, and then they talked to us about ways we can fundraise and how we can help, and doing kind of small events and fundraising like throughout the year, because a lot of times what happens is we fundraise up to January where our event is, and then it kind of gets put on the back burner. But we can fundraise all year round. So right now, we're working on setting up our TeamRaiser, which is an online app that each Student Council member gets, they each have a different link that links people right to their TeamRaiser fundraiser online, and you can donate online, and they can send it to anybody. So everybody gets their own link that they send out to family members or people in the community, or teachers, anybody who would like to donate. So we have each Student Council member raise money, so that's kind of what we're starting at right now. And Buckeye-thon also, this year, really wants to create a relationship between the high schools and Nationwide, because what happens a lot of the time is, like, maybe we're at Gehanna and, you know, people are raising money for Gehanna-thon, it's Gehanna-thon, it's Gehanna-thon, all this stuff, but not a lot of people don't really know about Buckeye-thon and where all this money goes. So a lot of the money goes to the Hematology Oncology Unit at Nationwide Children's, people don't really understand like what that means, and like where's that going? So we're trying to get the student body at Gehanna connected with some of the kids at Nationwide, and just to show like they're, like what they're donating, and the fundraising that we do actually goes towards something, and it really helps. So the final thing is this thing called, we're calling it the Post-it Project. This is kind of top secret, so you can't say anything to anybody. Yeah, just a lot of students. But on a Sunday evening, Student Council's going to go, we've been working on this for a couple of weeks now, we've ordered like thousands of Post-it notes, and we are writing positive messages, or jokes, or like slogans, or quotes on them, and we're coming in a Sunday evening, and we're going to put a Post-it note on every single locker in the school, and on like bathroom mirrors, or stalls inside the bathroom, in the cafeteria, tons of different places. We want to cover the school in Post-it notes filled with positive things. This is just a way to increase the student morale and just kind of like bring the school together in a positive and happy way. And we know that it's going to be a mess everywhere, Post-it notes will be everywhere, but that's just part of the fun of it, because it's going to be colorful. Yes. So that's all I have.
Amazing ideas. We won't tell anybody about the Post-it notes, but the wellness idea is just really fascinating. We'd like to learn more about that, and it's, it's one of our goals this year is to try to create a greater sense of belonging for all students, and so we're going to be doing a survey that Mrs. Elliott's going to talk about tonight, about, you know, social and emotional wellbeing. So maybe we can make a visit to Student Council and talk, talk to you guys about what you're doing and, and learn from you, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, great report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Thanks, Grace.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Gehanna Jefferson Education Foundation, and Tricia, I don't, it says you're, it's Sharon, but I see Tricia's here. I think the mic's off again.
I am Sharon's office twin. We sit cheek to cheek in our office there. I'm Tricia Twig, I'm with the Gehanna Jefferson Education Foundation, and I'm trying to be millennial with my notes here on my phone, but my eyes are not so millennial. There you go. We had a great year last year. We were able to put over $212,000 back into the school district and into students, and we are very proud that we were able to contribute towards the education and enhance it and bring those teachers' ideas to life last year, and we're very excited about that. And part of that was, we were able to do some district-wide initiatives, not just support students- And part of that was we were able to do some district-wide initiatives, not just support students, not to support teachers and buildings. And so I know that there's been mention of the kindergarten T-shirts, but I don't know if everybody got to really see them. If you don't get to go to the elementary schools, I'm just going to let this, you know, you can pass it down. Every, every kindergartner received one of these teacher, T-shirts in the fall, designed by the fabulous Judy Hanks Tabek, designer extraordinaire. And we also handed out at the beginning of the summer, the Kissing Hand book, which is a book that talks about transition and a tool for a student that they can use when they're feeling a little uncomfortable in a new situation. So I'm just going to give these to you. And the other thing that we, we've been doing this fall is we've been going to all of the staff, staff meetings. We haven't made it all the way around the district, but we're really trying to raise awareness with parents, with staff, with the community of what the Education Foundation can do and how we can all help the students. So the other show and tell item here that I have here is we have these cups that we are bringing to all of this staff meeting. And it says, it's got our logo on the front. On the back, it says, "Helping you with the cool stuff." That's kind of what we want them to think of us as. And inside of it, it has an insert that kind of gives you a little brief synopsis of what we did last year. And I'm going to give you, this is the insert that we have in the cup, so please feel free. I don't have enough cups for everybody, but I do have inserts. Okay. So, you know, part of our why and what we do is we do provide money to teachers in the form of grants. We just had our Grants, Mini Grants meeting this past week, and the board has approved it. And we really had a record year in, in terms of mini-grants. In the past, last year, we awarded 47 mini-grants. It was just over $11,000. So this year, we received over 86 applications, and we were able to award over $19,000 in mini-grants. So the mini-grants are $300 per teacher, and it's to support wellness, to support special education, and also enhance the curriculum. So we were really excited to have that large increase in grants and be able to help all those teachers out. We have tomorrow, I don't know if you know about the First Responders Tailgate, that is going to be at 5:00, just before the football game. And representatives from various First Responders groups will be there. So please stop by, say hello, thank them for their service. And we have a veteran, Mr. Charles Horn, who's going to be doing the coin toss. He is someone who just recently received his diploma. He was 86 years old. He had been shy of graduating from high school by half a credit, and we were able to give him his diploma just this past month. And so it'll be fun for him to be out there on the football field. We're going to have to keep him a little cool. It's going to be a hot one. And we have a couple other things planned. It's on the little sheets that you have, but we have a new event called Trunk or Treat. It's going to be on October 24th. It's going to be from 5:30 to 7:00 here at Clark Hall in the parking lot. This is an effort for us to reach some of the younger parents that don't know what the foundation is. It's going to be a free event where kids can come in their costume and they can trick or treat out of the back of people's cars. And thank you, Daphne's been very active in helping us solicit businesses to have people participate. So we're really looking forward to a fun event with that. And a lot of the teachers that have received grants have, have agreed to dress up and distribute candy. We'll be providing the candy and the giveaways, but they're, you know, the kids all love to see their teachers, and they really love seeing their teachers outside of classroom and in costumes. So we think that's going to be really fun. We have a Veterans Day Assembly in the morning of November 7th that's out in front of the high school. Yeah, I don't know if you know about what that plaza is out there, but the Veterans Plaza out there, there inscribed are the people who have graduated from Gehanna Lincoln that have lost their lives in service. So some of the family members come back. We will have a military person do the, the speech, and we like to recognize them on Veterans Day. And the last thing I just wanted to mention for you to mark your calendars is the Gehanna Gala is going to be on February 29th, which is Leap Year Day. Once every four years at, at 2020. So it, we're going to do the, we're going to COSI, and we're having dueling piano entertainment. So the theme is called Keys to the Future. So we are looking forward to a really fun event, mixing it up with some fun entertainment. And that's all I've got for now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Thank you. I think we've got two teachers here tonight, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Vander Kamp, who are here from the Gehanna Jefferson Education Association.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Vander Kamp. I'm from Royal Manor Elementary School, and I teach 3rd grade.
Hi, my name is Maggie Wright. It's actually changing to Baskett. I just got married on Friday. So I'll be a week tomorrow. I teach kindergarten this year at Royal Manor. I'm also the GJA Elections Chair, so I also kind of do both.
We didn't know you were supposed to bring a show and tell, otherwise we would have had something more fun to show you, but...
I will be in the dinosaur costume at Trunk or Treat, so if you see one of those T-shirts or arms, that'll be me.
That works. That's good. Well, currently Royal Manor is getting ready for our STEM Night. It'll be on November 7th. Our focus for STEM Night is on math and energy. We'll have a lot of different activities that families can come to and spend two hours of their evening doing all kinds of different exploration activities. Some of the things we have planned are some bump-it math games and ORBots. Those are pretty fun. Roller coasters and musical instruments. We'll have sound and prisms and laser light mazes, magnetic cars, and a lot more things. So it'll be a lot of fun, I'm sure, and I can't wait to see all the different fun things the families get to do.
I'm very short. I apologize. The other thing that we have going on this year that's new is Eager Engineers, which is new to our building. So our 2nd graders through 5th graders were able to apply, and that actually just started last week. So I know they're very excited about that. I also had it on my list to talk about the kindergarten T-shirts because that was something that we were really excited about at Royal Manor. As you're probably aware, our PTA doesn't earn as much money as other buildings in the district, and that was something that we had seen other buildings be able to provide. And so we were so thankful that we were able to give that to them. The kids loved them. We took, we took pictures in them. They may have gotten a little dirty for Safe Kindergarten, but the parents were really grateful. I got a lot of good dojo messages thanking them for this shirt, asking when they could wear them as a class again. So that was really nice to have. So thank you, GJEF. That's our building update. I'm going to kind of move on to some of our union updates. So GJEA will be holding some screening interviews, kind of to get to know the new, the candidates for the upcoming election. So we want to thank both Daphne and Burl for wishing to continue on the board, as well as John Handler for wanting to serve our community in this manner. We want you to thank you for responding to our president, Jenny Palguda, and wanting to meet with our screening committee, which has nine teachers at this time. We are looking forward to speaking with each candidate and hopes to find your vision for Gehanna. So, thank you. Now I can tell you in person. As I said, I'm also the union's election chair, so we hold normally just one big election every year. We send teachers to the OEA. They do a conference in December, and they also do a conference in May. And we can have up to 11 people on that, and that's based on our size. So based on your district size, depends on how many delegates you're able to send. And then we also are able to send people to NEA, which is the National Conference. This year, it will be held in Atlanta, and we are able to send four people to that. So we will be doing those elections in the upcoming month, and we'll be able to kind of send those people to bring back all of that information.
At this time of year, teachers are also really busy, get, thank you, getting ready for conferences, preparing all their notes, getting everything scheduled. Those will be happening throughout the next three weeks in our district at all the elementary and middle and high schools.
Any questions? That's it. That's all we got. Oh, 5:40 to 7:30.
And there are flyers.
And luckily, that was provided, a lot of those funds were provided from a grant, again, GJEF.
And we have flyers too that are out on the table.
Yep, they're by the agendas. Yep.
We're, we're still looking for volunteers. So if anyone would like to help, it, it tells you just to contact, who to contact, and we'll, we'd be glad to have you. That'll be fun.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think we have anyone here tonight from the city of Gehanna, so we will move on to committee updates. Ms. Mauring, do you have an update from Finance Committee?
We met Tuesday, September 17th, and we had five items on the agenda for discussion. Treasure Vasek covered August financials as well as the final appropriations that we will be that we will be voting on tonight.
It is.
So, oh, that is it. So we had five items on the agenda. Our Treasurer Vasek covered the August financials and final appropriations that we will be voting on tonight. We also had by WebEx, a presentation of the final Cooperative Strategies enrollment study, and that was excellent. And then we also had an update from our Treasurer on, we were in the midst of an audit. So it is going, no major issues were reported, so that's always exciting. And then as soon as the GAAP statements are provided, they will able, be able to finish the audit and look for a final report in January or February. And then we, lastly, had an update about the Lincoln Elementary process and, and plan and how that's proceeding by our superintendent. So it was a full evening.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, do you have an update from Policy and Governance Committee?
The only update I have is I believe the next policy meeting will be at the end of October. Date to be announced. Believes it's the 29th, you'll get an email.
Thank you. Ms. Chrysler, do you have an update from Student Learning and Achievement Committee?
Yes, thank you. We met on August 27th, and in a very informative meeting. A lot more content than at least I anticipated that we would receive, and very, very good, strong content about the work done with the PDAC and also professional development plans for the 2019-2020 school year. I was especially pleased with the amount of data and the fact that the presentation wasn't just, you know, anecdotal evidence, but also very fact-driven evidence from surveys and all of the hard work that the committees and the teams and the groups have done to really reach out to teachers within the district and find out what's important to them and provide very high-quality learning experiences for our teachers as well as our kids. So it was, it was really, really well done, and I hope that people have an opportunity, if they couldn't attend, to listen to the video because there's some, or listen to the audio because there's some great work that's being done with professional development that I don't think people even really know about. We have another meeting scheduled for September 24th, which is next Tuesday, and we will be going over the state report card, so that promises to be a nice long meeting as well.
And I know Ms. Chrysler just mentioned it, but just in case people are unaware, those committee meetings are audio-recorded, so if you're not able to attend and you want to listen, they are on our district website. And the Student Learning and Achievement Committee meetings, they're all interesting. But the Student Learning and Achievement Committee meetings, I think, are particularly interesting, especially for parents to listen to, to know what's going on in the district. Just saying. Is there any public participation tonight, Mr. Vasek? No slips. Is there anybody who intended to address the board that didn't fill out a public participation slip? Okay. Any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda at all? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No moved.
Ms. Mauring, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? Mr. Vasek, you want to call the roll?
Mauring.
Yes.
Pickel Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell. Chrysler.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We are on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Barrett?
You. I just want to start by, try not to talk so loud. Our newsletter, so Judy Hanks Tabek is in the back, and she creates these wonderful newsletters. They're very informative, and I just want to kind of highlight a couple things in that, in this most recent one, which went out this week. So there is a advertisement for our First Responders Night. This will be our fourth annual First Responders Night, and I just want to pay homage to Sergeant Jerry Kerr, who is also a commander of our local VFW. He had this idea, this inspiration in the fall of 2016. And actually, it was the summer of 2016, and we got together with first responders across, you know, our, our district boundaries, and we talked about honoring them, and we, we decided to have a tailgate, and, and our foundation, GJEF, is a big part of it. And so we try to partner with the local, with the police departments and, and local, the first responders of the team we're playing. And so last year, it was Springbrough, so that was kind of hard. And so this week, tomorrow, we play New Albany. So it'll be, we're going to try to keep the date with a, with a local, a team that's more close so that we can involve, you know, the first responders from that community. And so Jerry was able to participate in the 2016 First Responders Night. And then shortly after that, he passed away sadly, and then his wife was able to come and do the coin toss the next year. And it's just such a great event, and I hope it goes on for many years to come. And the fact that we're having Charles Theodore Horn do the coin toss and, and attend the tailgate as well. And I want to give a shout out to Rapid Relief, to the Rapid Relief team. They're going to do our tailgate again. And this is an amazing group that, they will set up, tear down, and, and, and feed us and our first responders that night. And they are just so giving and caring, and we're just so appreciative of that. And so we're excited. It seems to get a little bit bigger every year. And so I, I just, I love First Responders Night. It's, it's a great night. And, and the partnership we have with Chief Spence and the Gehanna Police Department, he's reached out to fire departments and sheriff departments and all kinds of, the New Albany Police Department, and he has good relationships with everybody. So he, he really encourages folks to come. So if you can make it tomorrow, it's a little bit before kickoff, so if you get there right at kickoff, you're going to miss it. So about a half hour, 40 minutes before, and you can stop and have a hot dog and, and join us. So it'd be great to see everybody there. Also, there's a nice piece about, in our newsletter, about the Class of 2032, our kindergarten class. There's a great piece about 6th Grade Adventure Day, which took place in all of our middle schools. And then another really good piece on One Pride, One Family that Mrs. Williams has started with the staff and students at the high school. So there's a nice article about that. And I also want to highlight, we have a really nice document Judy did on Phase 1 of our Master Facilities Plan, so it talked about the furniture and classroom updates, flooring, lighting updates. It also talked about what we're doing with the PI Fund from 2014 because that's really separate from the bond issue of 2018. There's lots of great pictures in there, and it basically summarizes where we are with Phase 1. And if you remember, Phase 1 was renovating classrooms, bathrooms, libraries in six elementary buildings and three middle schools. But it's also about putting lighting in, flooring. I mean, it's, it's, it's really exciting. On the 25th, our board is going to meet, and we're going to go on a tour of three different buildings to see the work that's been done, so we're excited about that. But also, part of Phase 1 was community engagement around a high school solution. And so we're going to go out and, and talk to going to go out and talk to folks about that. I think people really want to start to talk about, what are we going to do with our high school? And those focus groups that we're going to do are going to be Phase 2 conversations. So we're going to take our study from cooperative strategies that looks at our student potential growth analysis. We're going to do a couple of slides introducing where we think we will be in the next 5, 10, 15, and 20 years in terms of student growth. And then we want to have an open deliberative dialogue with folks. We'll share some ideas, and we'll get their feedback face-to-face. And then we'll also do a digital survey to find out what people are thinking, because we want as much involvement and input as we can get. So we'll be starting those in October. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with our Master Facilities Planning Committee to talk about Lincoln Elementary, where we are with the building of our new building. And so there's a really, in this update of Phase 1, there's a really good Q and A about, or FAQ about what we've been doing in terms of the design development. And right now, Cornica Cozing is going out for pricing with our latest design, which we had to reduce a little bit in terms of square footage because prices of construction for non-residential buildings in central Ohio have skyrocketed. People say about 6% a year, and so it's already gone up since we passed the bond issue. So we're hoping the numbers come in. They have a lot of detail to respond to, and so the first week of October, we should know those numbers on the new building. So please, if you have a second, check out the frequently asked questions on Phase 1. I think it's a really informative document. And so we can't wait to get started with the focus groups on Phase 2. I'm going to turn, in just a second, turn our meeting, this report over to Jill Elliott. She has a couple of things to say. But before I do that, I want to talk about, we've had four this year, it's the most we've had in a long time, National Merit Scholars, and I want to just kind of mention their names. It's really an honor to be among the, I'm sorry, the national semifinalists for the College Board. And so what this is, is it's the top half percent of students in the nation who take the PSAT, and these students will be eligible to apply for a merit finalist scholarship, where they have to do essays and package, an application. It's really an honor to have four students achieve this mark, and so I'm going to name the students, so they're all seniors. Emily Miller, Krista Ziana, Alex Meredith, and Brandon Waits. All are national semifinalists that will be able to apply for a national merit finalist, which is a scholarship that can be very helpful for tuition in college. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill, and she's going to talk about a couple of things.
Before you do that?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? So I know that we made, or you made some changes to the preparation that we do for students to get ready for the SAT. And I'm trying to remember the timing of the changes that were made. I know we switched from...
ACT to SAT.
ACT to SAT, and then we also extended the grades that we offer.
Yes, we offer the PSAT 8, 9 to 9th graders, as well as the PSAT NMSQT to 10th and 11th graders in the fall, and that administration's coming up. And then we administer the SAT in the spring for all juniors.
So again, I don't remember what the timing of that was, but I assume that these students, at least, were the beneficiaries of some of that additional preparation?
Mm-hmm.
That's fantastic.
It could be. So the SAT, the reason, if you remember, why we switched from the ACT to the SAT in terms of the tests we do at the high school, is it's connected with test prep and Khan Academy, so you can look at your strengths and your weaknesses, and you can go online and practice. So I'm not sure if these students did that. That'd be a good thing to kind of check out. It may be too soon to take credit for that work, but I think we're going to see...
I was going to give it to you anyway.
We'll take it.
Yeah. So everything's working great. I think it's, it could be, but I think over time, I think that's going to pay dividends. So thank you for mentioning that.
It's fantastic that there are four.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I have just a few things to highlight. As was mentioned earlier, the state report card came out, and so at our Student Learning and Achievement Committee meeting next week, I'll be doing a more lengthy presentation. Our report card looked very similar to last year's, so we have some areas of strength to highlight and some areas to continue analyzing and improving on. We ended with an overall B for our district report card, so that's a positive for sure. And then just to highlight one area in particular, we had an A again in our progress component, which measures student growth. And so actually, just yesterday, I had some, I got some praise that came from someone at ODE about our continual strong performances in that area. So we'll talk more about that next week. Try not to make it too long. I also wanted to let you know that our PDAC learning walks started this week. I know at our last meeting, we had a chance to talk a little bit about it, and definitely an experience that our staff loves to engage in. So last year, from those walks, our PD theme for the year was born, which is equity and access for all students. And so we're excited to see what the PD, what the learning walks bring about for planning for the future professional development opportunities. But this year, we're planning sessions and bringing in speakers, well, we'll have both internal and external speakers, working with our staff on, you know, things like effective co-teaching strategies. We'll be working through poverty simulations and talking about implicit bias. Also, you know, the best and most effective ways to work with EL students and their families, with gifted families, and then bringing back some of our hot sessions from last year's mental health PD session. So we're excited about that. To go along with our PD theme, we have a district-wide book study that we are hosting, and we have 180 staff members signed up with great representation from all levels. And so I have a book here for all of you to take, but we're really excited about the work that the staff's going to be doing together. And the author's Cornelius Minor, he actually works out of the Teachers College, which is connected to our reading and writing curriculum as well, and it's focusing on equity access and the quest to be who our students need us to be. So I have a text for all of you. Last two things, Calendar Committee is going to be kicking off next month. We have, I'm gathering names, a parent representative and a staff representative from every building, as well as a few extras from the union that they'll be adding in. We'll meet a couple of times next month, anticipate running it similarly to how it was done in the past. And we'll ultimately have a survey that goes out, where district-wide people can provide feedback and kind of, you know, a little bit of a vote on the calendar. Hope to have, looking at doing three years of calendars possibly, so that we can get together and always have a calendar in advance. So that's the goal, and hope to have those to recommend to the board November, December, depending on how that process goes. And then lastly, tonight, actually around 7, an email went out district-wide about our panorama survey that we're going to be utilizing in the district. It was mentioned earlier, we are going to be collecting perception data from our staff and students. Student mental health is definitely one of our top priorities, and so just as we use instructional data to guide our decision-making, we want to collect social, emotional data from our students as well. And some of the questions, they are, they regard topics such as sense of belonging, school climate, emotional regulation, social awareness. In the letter, there's a link to a demo of some of the questions that families will be able to take a look at. We will be administering to students in grades 3 through 12 twice during the year, and we're really looking to gather that data and be able to have some deliberative conversations about the best way to support the whole child, to make sure we've got both sides going. And I want to say, maybe it was two months ago that the board voted on the dollars for that assessment. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jill. I just want to say, just following up on the panorama piece that Jill talked about, I was in a meeting with about 50 superintendents Wednesday morning, and we had a really robust discussion about mental health and what we're seeing among especially early childhood education, primary education, but really K-12. And we shared a lot of the things that we're doing so that we could learn from one another. And so I was able to share what our curriculum team and our mental health team is doing, and so I'm just going to kind of summarize that really quickly. So we are using in K-5 buildings conscious discipline, and so there's lots of strategies that help kids calm down when they're having a difficult moment. And it's really a comprehensive classroom management and building management tool that really looks at social and emotional well-being as being an integral part of learning. You know, we know that our emotions and our minds are just inextricably linked, so we've seen a lot of really good things happen with conscious discipline. Really proud of our curriculum team, mental health team, and our principals for leading that effort. But we also made the commitment to staff every elementary school with a counselor, and we thought that was a really important move. And then Lisa Kelly's position of Coordinator of Mental Health Services is really another important move, to bring all those elements together and make sure that they align and they cohere, and we have protocols for things, and we're doing things across the districts horizontally and from grade level to the next vertically. It's really, really important that we build on what we do and that we get better each day, each month, each year. But mental health is something that is on the minds of superintendents across Franklin County, and it is a really hot topic right now, and we're really, really concerned about how kids feel because we know it's inextricably linked to how they learn. And so, great discussion. I think we can be proud of some of the steps we've taken, but we still have more to learn. And I think the goal of building more connection, a better sense of belonging with kids, I think this panorama data is really going to help us do that. So really applaud the work Jill and Lisa Kelly and our curriculum team and everybody's doing around professional development and mental health.
Is that something that you plan to maybe contact the local paper and talk about, that initiative? I mean, I think if the letter went home, because I do think that we're on the cutting edge there, and you can't, whether you're a parent or anyone else in a community with the things that have happened across, you know, this country alone, even just this summer with mass shootings and, you know, different aspects of violence, it'd just be nice to educate more than just the parents about what, how seriously this district is taking it and the steps that we as a whole are taking to fund those types of efforts, not just to keep kids safe in the school, but to teach them, like the conscious discipline, like it's teaching kids at a very young age how to control their emotions and how to deal with some of the emotions that are coming up, and even some of the things we heard today. So I was wondering if that was something that was in the plan, to put that out to the broader public?
I think that's an excellent idea, and we definitely will look into doing that. We haven't planned to do that yet, but I think it's, talking about it, and, you know, as Grace talked about tonight, bringing awareness to it. Boy, that was powerful, what she had to say, and it's just so moving to me and just exciting that our kids, our student council, are leading efforts around well-being and mental health. So Jill and I will definitely visit the student council class that meets every day and learn from them. But yeah, I think sitting down with Marla from This Week News and talking to her about it, it will be a really important thing, not just to celebrate the things we're doing, but to spread awareness of, you know, if you see something that may not look right to you, or somebody that's in trouble, we need to step in, and we need to help, and we need to be there. And so, yeah, it's a great idea. Thank you.
And I'll add, I know we had done some brainstorming about maybe even having Judy do some videos and, you know, some pieces to highlight. We have a lot of other things going on also. We have the Rocks Groups going on in a couple of buildings, which is a girl empowerment and self-defense training. We also had staff members just this week get trained in Hope Squad, which is a suicide prevention program. So we definitely have a lot of great things going, and with the new student wellness dollars, we had our first brainstorming session last week on how we want to kind of expand some of those programs and add some other pieces in. So we definitely have a lot to share and highlight for our families.
Any questions from, I had a question, not to change the subject to the Calendar Committee, but it's good to hear the timing of all of that, because I know I have been asked many, many times lately by parents who are trying to make plans, when that next calendar will be out, and I think that that makes a lot of sense, to do a three-year rather than a two. My question, though, is that we had a conversation about talking about start times...
Start times.
And we had talked about needing to do that prior to the Calendar Committee. It sounds like, I mean, as the months went on, I realized that that probably wasn't possible because we need to get a calendar out, but...
Right. So in terms of school start times, we're talking about like the hour of day that we start school at the various levels. So we actually, Mr. Barrett and I just talked about this today, in our, because we can get a calendar out for actual time of month that we start, when our breaks are, I don't think we need to slow that process up.
Okay, good.
We're having discussions as an administrative team, primarily with the secondary levels, because that's probably where the flip would need to happen, or, you know, some shifting. So we are discussing that at our first principals' meeting in October, and then we are going to do a district-wide survey about interest and, you know, gather some information there, and then also look for who might be interested in having kind of a focus group type of conversation. So we're going to go ahead and move forward with the calendar, but also get that school start time discussion going.
That makes sense. Thank you for that update, because I know I will be asked.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Anything from anyone else? Okay. Mr. Vasik, do you have a Treasures report?
Yes, thank you. There are four items of financial business on the agenda tonight for the board's consideration. First is the August 2019 financial statements as submitted to the board. As of the end of August, we had revenues of $37.1 million in the general fund, and that is an increase of 2.9% compared to last year at this time. Expenditures, as of August, are $15.3 million in the general fund, and that's actually a reduction of 1.4% to last year. So we're trending pretty well so far this fiscal year. We have a listing of donations totaling $3,843. We also have, for consideration, the permanent appropriations for the fiscal 1920 year. We have 25 separate funds totaling $157.9 million. Obviously, a general fund is the most significant, and we're asking for spending authority of $96.6 million. And lastly, we have a transfer of funds from the general fund to the Journey to Learning Fund.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We've got four items for action then, under Financial Business. Is there a motion to approve items numbers 1 through 4 under letter C?
I'll move.
Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Mooreing, any additional discussion about those items? Okay. Mr. Vasik, you want to call the roll?
Hairston.
Yes.
Mooreing.
Yes.
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. There are eight items for action under letter D, Educational Pupil Programs and Services. Is there, if there's not an objection to taking those items together, is there a motion to approve items number 1 through 8 under letter D?
Move.
Mr. Hairston, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? Mr. Vasik, you want to call the roll?
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Mooreing.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We are on page 7, and there are 35 items for action under letter E, Human Resources. If there is not an objection to taking those items together, is there a motion to approve items number 1 through 35 under letter E?
I'll move.
Ms. Mooreing, is there a second? Ms. Mooreing, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
I've got a question.
Sure.
Right under Items for Information, is that part of the Human Resources, since you're dealing with resignation and position transfer?
Yeah, I think, I think that they belong not under letter D, but under letter E, Human Resources.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that would make more sense. But they're not items that we're voting on.
Right.
Anything? Okay, Mr. Vasek, you want to call the roll?
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Mooreing.
Yes.
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And then there are five items for action under General Business, letter F, on page 19. If there is not an objection to taking those together, is there a motion to approve items number one through five under letter F?
I'll move.
Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
I get it.
Mr. Hairston, any discussion at all about these items? Mr. Vasek, you want to call the roll one more? Well, again, I guess there's one more after this, but...
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Mooreing.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We don't have any board reports this evening, but are there any comments from anyone from the board? Any items?
So just that, I didn't have a report, but I've just noticed some things on social media and also in the news with respect to some approvals in both Jefferson Township and Gaena for different development projects. And so I can prepare a little bit more comprehensive report at our next meeting and kind of list those. But one of the interesting things, which is kind of a piggyback on something that I think, you know, we've been talking about in different committees and also came up at our last board meeting, is that just the relationship between Gaena and Jefferson Township. And I, I think what I'd like to say about it personally is I'm pleasantly surprised to find that while it's not all positive discourse about that relationship, at least there's now discourse. And so sometimes I think that you have to have a discussion, you know, on the table in order to be able to even bring any issues up. And, and there's been a couple of comments on both sides about the fact that while they can't seem to agree on anything, the one thing they do seem to agree on is the fact that the school district encompasses both of those areas as in the one stuck in the middle. So I, I'm encouraged by the fact that these things are making the paper, and they're making posts in social media, a little bit more responsible posts in some cases as well, and hope that they can continue that dialogue and, and continue to work forward here in the next foreseeable future in order to help come up with some understanding that certainly impacts our district.
Anybody else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to go home.
I'll move.
Ms. Chrysler, is there a second?
I get it.
Mr. Hairston, any discussion? Mr. Vasek?
Mooreing.
Last time.
Mooreing.
Yes.
Pickle Antonio.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Chrysler.